Good evening and welcome to the Lake Havasu City Council Meeting. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, February 12, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We'll start with an invocation from Pastor John Mackey from the Havasu Alliance Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Girl Scout Troop 2276, led by Ms. Suzanne Strader and Natalie Brynlee, Ally and Cherish will join us. So Pastor Mackey.
Thank you very much for my privilege of being here. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come to and pause before you this evening to acknowledge that you are God, that you are sovereign over all, that all our -- we belong to a nation that's under God, and we acknowledge that all our rights have come from God, and you have given us life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. We're very grateful for all of these. And so as we meet here to live under these rules, we pray for guidance and direction. Thank you, Lord, for this great city that you have given to us in your creation. We thank you, Lord, for those who here tonight, serving you. And I pray for wisdom and direction for each and every one. May you bring order and peace to this city. May you give wisdom to those who will lead us and direct us. We thank you for those who are serving to protect this city, for our firemen, for our policemen. Lord, honor them. Many of our civil workers, secretaries and office holders have, you know, are paid, but nevertheless are serving and help them to do so, help them to have patience with those who are -- they're serving, because sometimes we do complaining, but we pray that you give them strength, wisdom and guidance as they lead us. And in this meeting, may you bless it, may you direct it. And so we pray, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, may you follow through with us in every way, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Yeah, thank you. If you want to join us at the podium over here and share a little bit about your troop.
(Inaudible) 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 Hi, my name is Ally and I'm from 2276. Um... Your turn. Hello, I'm Brynlee Williams from 2276.
Hello, I am Cherish Crowe from Troop 2276, and Ms. Suzanne told me to say that we brought cookies for the council members.
Yeah, you know the way to our heart for sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much for inviting us to come in and participate in our civic responsibility and blessings in our community. The girls are happy to answer any questions if you have any. They can talk about cookies and how that works, or what our troop likes to do, what our passion is in the community. We've been around for six years here in town as a collective group, so.
Excellent. I believe Vice Mayor Lane has a question.
Yeah. I have a question. How many young ladies are there in Troop 2276? And how do little girls that want to join, how do they do that?
There's 16 in our troop, and you can join by...
Girl Scout Lake Havasu, there's a website that I can share. We're always looking for new leaders. And there's lots of troops that are larger than ours. Some troops are up to 35 girls because we don't have enough leaders. It really is all a volunteer effort in the community, and like Brynlee said, we have 16 girls.
Excellent. Any other questions? Yeah, who's the leader in the cookie sales? Excellent. Yeah, very nice. Any other questions of the council? Councilmember Lynn?
I am a troop leader also for a Girl Scout Troop 6521, and I have a question. What are your girls' goals this year for your cookie sales?
We have decided as a troop to spend our money to go to Camp Stevens in the Walupis. And in the past, we have gone to SeaWorld and spent the night with the penguins.
Very nice. Yeah, excellent. Excellent. Any other questions from the council? Well, thank you so much, ladies, from the Girl Scout Troop 2276. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is our roll call.
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Thank you. The next item is our call to the public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on any item of importance to them. You don't need to sign up, but you do have five minutes. When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and for the city clerk. There is an indicator box there. When the light is green, you have five minutes as it moves down to the two-minute warning and then down to the red, which your time is up. At this time, you can talk about anything you'd like. This council cannot have a two-way conversation, so if you do have an item that is already on the agenda, please hold your comments for that time, and the council can give feedback on there. So with that being said, again, you don't have to sign up, but we do have one person, Trish Perez, that would like to speak.
Okay. Hi, I'm Trish Perez. I'm a Havasu resident for about 10 years now, and I'm trying to raise awareness in our community about accessibility and specifically parking. I believe that we need more accessible parking in this community. Of our community, 38% of our residents are either over 65 or have a disability, and that's not including our winter visitors. So I'd really like to propose that at some point in the future, we evaluate if we do need more than what we already have, because every time we go to Walmart or anywhere, there's never enough in the winter. In the summer, we can park all day long, but not so much in the winter. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the City Council at the call to the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public -- or the call to the public. Item six is the consent agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I believe we're ready to vote. Thank you. The next item, item seven, is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is the investment report as of December 31, 2018. I believe that it was on here for the council to review. Does any member of the council have any questions? All right, that is filed. Moving on to item 7.2, announce the vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on the Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Citizens interested can fill out an application at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 7.3 is our city manager's report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off the City Manager Report for this evening with a thank you to our city employees who were recently recognized and thanked in Riverstein Magazine by the Arizona Children's Association for contributing to the Gift of Hope Program. The program provides holiday gifts for struggling families in Mojave and La Paz Counties through toy drives, donations, and pick-a-family trees. The Admin Services Department has coordinated the event for the past three years and plans to continue coordinating this event for the years to come. So thank you to Jill Olson and all her staff and all city employees for all their donations. Sometimes maintenance work is taken for granted. This is a good example of what our city crews do behind the scenes to keep our infrastructure clean and healthy. I'd like to thank Fred Francis and Jeff Brandt, pictured here in the appropriate protective equipment, for their service and cleaning pigeon droppings off the police department's building in preparation for a roof repair project. Our Customer Service Division and our Admin Services Department created an online process for our special event temporary vendors. This allows them to pay their licensing fees online with no required visit to City Hall. Our partners work with the event promoters to contact each vendor and streamline the licensing process for events. This new process has generated a very positive response from both vendors and event promoters. Previously, they'd have to come into City Hall and to pay the fee for the temporary license, and they're still -- that's still an available option, but now it's much easier to do that online. We had a very successful tri-city council legislative day just last week. Elected officials and staff from Lake Havasu City, Kingman, and Bullhead City met with Representative Leo Biasucci and Senator Sunny Borelli at the league offices, where we stress the importance of local control and do no harm to cities, as well as improving the quality of life for our residents. We toured the Capitol and met with Representative Biasucci in his office, and we, including Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Lane, and Councilmember Koch, were proudly introduced on the House floor by Representatives Biasucci and Cobb. First through fourth graders from Havasu Preparatory Academy in the Patriotic Adventures and Constitutional Educational Program, otherwise known as PACE, filled the City Council chambers just last week. The kids visited with Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Lane, and Councilwoman Lynn, and the kids learned about city government and our community. The class led the room with the Pledge of Allegiance and sang "God Bless America," as well as "You're a Grand Old Flag," and they had plenty of very thoughtful questions. It was a very fun event. Arizona Governor Doug Ducey presented his State of the State address to the community at a luncheon hosted by the Lake Havasu Chamber of Commerce just yesterday. Mayor Cal Sheehy presented the State of the City and reported that the State of the City is strong. The luncheon was well-attended and included the mayors and councilmembers from Bullhead City, Kingman, as well as Lake Havasu. Governor Ducey invited the tri-city councilmembers on the stage as he signed very important legislation regarding the Arizona Drought Continency Plan. Just today, Mayor Sheehy visited the high school to present a proclamation for the Career and Technical Education Month for the month of February. Career and Technical Education, or CTE as it's well-known, offers individuals opportunities to learn lifelong skills that are necessary to provide them with career choices. We actually have one of those students here tonight shadowing our city staff, Steve Blake in the back, as they're taping the meeting. Brody Port is in the Career Exploration Program as he's waving to us through our local Chamber of Commerce, and he's enrolled in the CTE program at the high school. Brody just returned from a Skills USA competition in Yuma, where he brought home gold for the Lake Havasu High School. He is now serving. Today is his first day as an intern and volunteer for the city, where he's learning about city operations as well as possible career paths. Thank you, Brody. The city, we launched a new website this week. The new website focuses on the end user with features that include a search tool on every page, easy access to council and board meetings, the ability to sign up for city news alerts by email. We have a variety of city maps, and overall, a better experience on mobile devices, as well as improved access to information about city services and events. We expect and appreciate feedback from the community. Please visit us at LHCaz.gov and let us know what you think. Because we use existing talent and technology, the new website was created at a very minimal cost to the city, and the ongoing maintenance of the website will be cheaper than it was previously. I'd like to thank our city's web services and media coordinator, Steve Blake, for leading this project. The Lake Havasu City Police Department is conducting enhanced traffic enforcement during Winter Blast from Wednesday, February 13 through Sunday, February 17. The funds for this program were provided by a grant awarded by the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety. We'd like to remind everyone in the Sarah Park area for the fireworks show to drive with caution, obey all traffic control devices, exercise patience due to the expected congestion, and please enjoy the show. And lastly, reminder that all city offices are closed on Monday, February 18, in observance of President's Day holiday. Of course, police and fire department personnel are always on duty. The Aquatic Center will be open for morning lap swim and exercise classes, and the Community Center Relics and Rods Hall will be open for pickleball from 9:00 AM to noon. All city offices will resume normal schedules on Tuesday, February 19. Trash and recycling services will not be interrupted as part of the holiday. And Mayor and Council, that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Do any of the councilmembers have any questions for the City Manager? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item eight, Public Hearings. 8.1, Adopt Resolution Number 19-3281, Appointing City Council Members to the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization's Executive Board. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 2013, Lake Havasu City established the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization. The formation resulted due to the 2010 census, in which the city's population exceeded 50,000 people, triggering the requirement to establish a metropolitan planning organization, or an MPO. An MPO ensures that regional cooperation and transportation and planning occurs, and it also channels the federal funding for transportation projects and programs here in Lake Havasu City. The Lake Havasu MPO is administered by an executive board. The governor of Arizona authorized the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Board to be comprised of three representatives from Lake Havasu City, one from Mojave County Board of Supervisors, and one representative from the Arizona State Transportation Board. Federal law provides that members of an MPO executive board must be locally elected officials. Due to membership changes on the City Council, it's necessary to revise the resolution that appoints the council members to the MPO executive board. This item was recently discussed at the council retreat, and it was suggested that Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Lane, and Councilmember McCoy should serve as board members, and Councilmember Koch be appointed as the alternate, which is the resolution that is presented for your approval tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Gary? All right, this is a public hearing. I will open up the public hearing. Does any member of the public want to talk to the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 19-3281, Appointing City Council Member to the Lake Havasu Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2, Adopt Resolution Number 19-3284, Approving the Lake Havasu City Municipal Court Site Maintenance and Operation Intergovernmental Agreement with Mojave County to maintain and support the existing court network system. Judge Kalali.
Thank you, Mayor Sheehy. Councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. This resolution is pretty straightforward in as much as it's something that we do every five years. We don't have a lot of control over the costs associated with the IT. Part of that comes from the state, and it's mandated for the computers that we have and the IT support that the state provides. And then part of it is with the agreement with the county regarding the other IT support. So there, it ends up being somewhere around $150 per computer per month. We have somewhere between 20 and 24 computers, so it's this year around $34,000. It'll obviously go up as we get more computers if we need them. There was, there were a couple of changes to the agreement itself relating, one, to how the city would access the server, the county server, if we needed that, that would have to go through the presiding judge, Judge Gertler. And then there is a minor, well, there was a change regarding how if we, for whatever reason, either the county or the city needed to get out of the agreement, how that would occur. And so those are the major parts of that. Again, we don't have a lot of control over what the actual cost is. Most of that is mandated and/or governed by the IGA. So I'm mostly here for questions.
Excellent. Do members of the council have questions for Judge Kalali? So do the, we talked a little bit about, at the council retreat, about the technology and how it's not necessarily meeting the needs for the court. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So depending on the organization that is providing IT support, you can do different things. The city has been able to move forward quickly with the changes in IT and the improvements in how people manage their IT, their servers, those kind of things. The county hasn't necessarily been able to move as quickly, and also, we are state-mandated to use a certain type of case management system that is, I mean, it's an abacus, really. Best way to describe it is we just, it's hard to deal with, and so we're kind of, our hands are tied in a lot of ways in how we can move forward in utilizing the technologies that's out there. And so right now, we do the best that we can, but there are definitely better ways that hopefully at some point we'll be able to access.
Thank you. Do any members...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy?
I was just wondering, do you foresee in the future, like, how many computers? Do we need to update the computers? Are they old? Are they good?
Well, so what we do basically is we pay the state, and then they come in and replace the computers every five or six years, or however, whatever their schedule is, that's how it typically happens. Most courts run that way. I know that there are some courts that will do all of their IT in-house, including their computer updates and all of that, and then they just contract with the state to be able to exchange information. And so they have a little more control over what they can do, but the vast majority of courts utilize the AOC, the state's Administrative Office of Courts, to run all of their IT. And so it just kind of comes out if we get somebody else new in the court, then they need a computer, and that computer will cost whatever it is, $150 a month for all of the upkeep of that.
Councilmember Groth, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge Kalali, if I may, the system that you're using with the state, I understand, I appreciate that you refer to it as an abacus, but all the other applications that you need to use and the people who work with you need to use to run your courts smoothly and effectively, is all that works pretty well in terms of with our city? And then, of course, you have to...
Well, we don't work with the city, unfortunately. There's very little interplay between us and the city IT. We wish there were more. The things that the city's doing, bandwidth, all of those kind of things, servers and all of that would be great for us if we could do that. We have two computers that are linked to the city, and other than that, all of our computers are linked to the state, and so we don't have a lot of interaction with city IT.
Well, I guess maybe I would just follow up and say, like, you got the apps that you need, you know, the Excel spreadsheets, the Microsoft Word, all that stuff. Are you guys okay with that stuff?
Yes, we utilize that, and that, again, is through the county, not through the city. Most of what we do comes through the county right now.
Thank you, Judge.
So most of the conversation at the planning session was about the deconsolidation of the courts, and this is one component that makes it challenging for you in the current arrangement?
Well, either way, it's, we just need to be able to plan moving forward, and whatever that looks like, you know, one, three, five, and 10 years out, we would like to be able to plan for that, and that's kind of the idea behind some of the changes we made in here and some of the discussions we hope that the council will have with the county and the supervisors to determine, you know, what best fits all of our needs and how we can move forward one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other questions from the councilmembers? All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Does anyone from the public want to address the City Council on this matter?
Do you guys have an in-house IT person?
Sir, if you could just come up to the microphone and state your name.
Yeah, yeah. The question is whether or not we had an in-house IT person. We utilize the county IT. They are located in Kingman, and so if there is a need, then they have to send somebody down to Lake Havasu, or we, they have to have one of our clerks go in and do the IT work.
All right, we still have the public, the public comment. Does anyone else want to address the City Council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council.
Mayor, motion?
Yes, please, Councilmember Dolan.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 19-3284, Approving the Mojave County Court Automation Project, Lake Havasu City Municipal Court Site Maintenance and Operation Intergovernmental Agreement with Mojave County.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Judge. Item 8.3 is Adopt Ordinance Number 19-1212, Rezoning Track 2192, Block 9, Lots 1 and 2, 2100 Kiowa Boulevard North, from RM Residential Multifamily District to C2 General Commercial District. Mr. Schmeling?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The request before you is to rezone a couple of properties located on Kiowa Boulevard on the northern portion of the community. Here you can see the subject lots immediately across from the fire station. The entire block was rezoned for the most part to C2 back in 2003. These two lots just happened to be missing at the time, for whatever reason. Here we are 16 years later, looking to rezone those. And the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to approve this action. That concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Schmeling from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
Something that's on all of our minds, did you bring any cookies?
No, I did not. That's a tough act to follow.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other questions from the council? Councilmember McCoy?
That's a hard act to follow. I'm just wondering, do we have an idea of what, once the rezoning is done, what they're planning to do?
We do not. I know there's individuals in the audience that represent the applicant, but at this point, they did not disclose that information at the Planning Commission meeting.
All right, are there any other questions? This is a public hearing. We'll open it up to the public. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Yes, please, just go to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Marion Westervelt. I am a new resident in town. Can you give me the cross streets there? I live near there. I want to see if that's going to affect me.
The cross street here on the north end, or east, if you will, is Amapola, and it's, on the west end is Runabout.
And Kiowa, it's right across the street from Fire Station 2 on Kiowa?
Yes, this is the fire station right here. Let's go back to this picture. This might help.
How far north is that? I don't recognize those streets. Can you give me...
Kiowa Boulevard is the main thoroughfare. Are you familiar with the fire station on Kiowa?
I think so, but I'm not quite sure how far north that is. Well, FedEx, right down there. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just above FedEx on the opposite side of the street.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 19-1212, Amending the Zoning Classification and District Boundary of Track 2192, Block 9, Lots 1 and 2, 2100 Kiowa Boulevard North, from Residential Multifamily District to General Commercial District. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Get out of here.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is Introduce Ordinance Number 19-1213, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 13.28 to Make Necessary Changes Regarding Lot Ties. Code Chapter 13.28 to make necessary changes regarding lot ties, lot alterations, and lot splits. Mr. Schmeling.
Thank you, mayor and council, and no, I did not bring cookies or anything else. This item is an introduction of a code amendment, possible code amendment, to our subdivision code. Currently, we have three types of lot modifications or processes for the manipulation of lots within Lake Havasu City. We have lot combinations, simply where two adjacent lots are being combined. We also have lot splits, where if somebody has a larger lot, they decide to split it into two, creating another developable lot. And we also have lot alterations, which is the most common of the three, which is where somebody alters a lot line because they find out that a wall was built over the property line, and so two adjacent properties shift that property line to match the wall, or whatever the case may be. Our current code contains three different review, notification, and appeal process for each one of those programs, and quite frankly, none of which we were actually following. We were doing some kind of modification of each one of those, which was our common practice. So once we reviewed the code, we looked at nine other Arizona cities to find the best and most common practices among other cities. We went ahead and made modifications to our code to create one program, one review process, one notification, and one appeal process for all three actions since they're so similar. This is just an introduction tonight. No council action is necessary, other than the public hearing, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Schmeling? All right, this is a public hearing. I will open it up to the public. Does anyone want to address council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion from the council. Yes, Councilmember Koch.
I move to introduce ordinance number 19-1213, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 13.28 to make necessary changes to Chapter 13.28 regarding lot ties, lot altercations, and lot splits.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Councilmember McCoy's having some technology issues, so...
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item, eight point five, is approve the sole source purchase of Badger water meters from National Meter and Automation, Inc. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, mayor and council. The item before you is the approval of a sole source, but also an exceeding $50,000, because we'll end up purchasing about $150,000 worth of these meters this year. Badger is our standard meter. We've been using it for about 25 or 30 years. We do that because then it's, all the parts are standardized, and we also find that this is a meter that does service very well. We occasionally, every couple of years, will check just to make sure that Badger's within the ballpark as far as other meter companies, or that there's other technologies. But again, this is our recommendation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of the council for Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Dolan.
Mark. I'm not going to ask you the cookie question. I'm just curious, do we still manually just go out and check meters, or is there technologies where they send signals or anything? I was just curious about basic meters.
Radio reads have been around for a long time. The technology's changed a little bit, where there are systems now that instead of being a receiver or broadcaster on each meter, that there are, then having to worry about getting that signal to a central location, you actually have, like, repeaters and systems like that. So those technologies changed a little bit. Basic meters are about 60 or 70 bucks. The equipment to radio reads about 100 bucks, so it's significant expenditure. Also, the technology on those require battery updates, and the technology is about every five or six years, so there's a fairly significant expense. We have, if I'm not mistaken, about 1,000 radio reads, and we're looking at starting to develop criteria for where there might be appropriate. For example, the routes on Akoma or McCullough, you can imagine a meter reader having to stop on McCullough Boulevard in four lanes and get out and do the reading and get back in safely. So we're looking at it from a technology and safety standpoint in going down that road to radio read the entire community, it'd be about $2 or $3 million, which is a significant expense, and so the payoff hasn't been worked out as far as being where we want to head yet. But we do constantly look at that and just see where we want to go.
Are there any other questions? Vice Mayor Lane?
If I may. Mark, I noticed that each year, this is, the expenses are dropping about $20,000 a year. Are we buying that many fewer meters, or are we, they're just getting cheaper?
No, typically what you see is fluctuation on the meters is twofold. One is, obviously, we have to respond to new meters, so as new construction goes up, we purchase more meters. As construction goes down, we purchase less. What you're seeing here was an actual lack of staffing, so therefore, we didn't have those crews to do the extra work, which would be the upgrading of our meters. We have somewhere between 5,000 and 8,000 meters that are plus 20 years, and so you typically want to replace your meters that are older, because somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 years, they start to decrease in their reading capabilities fairly quickly, so you'll get down to 90% accuracy, which, to the benefit of the public, means that they're paying for less water, but to the benefit of the water system, you're getting less revenue. So that, you try and maintain not very many meters out there on that longer aged age. So what you saw here was staffing didn't allow us to keep an aggressive replacement program. We are actually, for the first time in about 18 months, fully staffed in the water division, so we anticipate being able to do that. Also, Mr. Doyle Wilson has, has been aware of a grant that is both related to a, I thought it was ultraviolet, but it may be infrared, review of water leaks, which would be a different method of determining water leaks, but in addition to that, the grant also will have a component that can be the replacement of aged meters, so we're going to be applying for that. It's a 50/50 match with the federal government, so that'll also buy about 500 more meters, and so then we'll just have to staff to get that accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, this is a public hearing. Does any member of the public want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan.
Motion.
Yes.
I move to approve the sole source purchase of Badger meters from National Meter and Automation Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. That was Councilmember McCoy's yay vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, item nine on our agenda is current events. Do any of the councilmembers have any committee reports?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Lane?
If I may.
Yes.
Today, the Lake Havasu MPO held its first-ever retreat, where we talked about traffic-related issues here in Lake Havasu, and I would like to invite everybody. We're currently doing a regional transit feasibility and implementation plan, and what this is, is whether or not do we need to expand the current transportation, public transportation that we have. Kind of goes along with what we had earlier from the public comment relating to parking. Do we need to expand our current? We use Havasu Mobility now. Do we need to expand that? So, but what I'd like to do is invite everybody to fill out a survey. They have them online at www.lhaz.gov/TransitPlan, and let us know your thoughts on whether or not we need to expand our transit plan, or it would just be a waste of money.
Is it LHCAZ or LHAZ?
LHCAZ.
Is it LH?
Oh, my bad. Thank you, and you can find it on the city website.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Councilmember Lane?
I was forwarded some information from WACOG today on a utility assistance pre-enrollment program for seniors. WACOG is rolling out a new program in Mojave County for eligible seniors to receive electric-only assistance before summer. The number that can be called is 928-753-6247. Again, that's 928-753-6247. They will need assistance for electricity, you'll need applicant's proof of citizenship, applicant's Arizona State driver's license, social security cards, gross income from all household members, and your most recent electric bill. And they could save up to $800 a year by using this program.
Thank you. Do any other councilmembers have a council committee report? All right, I would like to give a shout-out to all of the high school students that have joined us today. Thank you. The chambers are full today. We appreciate you being part of this process. Moving on to number 10 is our final call to the public. This is the, an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any item of importance to them. If anyone would like to do that, the call to the public is now open. Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item 11 is our future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 26, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., and that's a regular meeting. We then have a meeting, a regular meeting on Tuesday, March 12, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., and again on Tuesday, March 26, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., we'll have another regular meeting. Is there any future agenda items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you for being here today.